You know, we have to start from square one. But that's what they're talking about a lot is an overlay.
Yeah, these, uh, when they're, when they're looking at phase one, we're looking for twenty-two to twenty-four. They're talking about repairing forty-six thousand seven hundred fifty-nine linear feet. And, uh, that, that covers a whole lot of streets. It's not just one, but, uh, for instance...
I've got the map up there now.
Yeah, okay. Well, which color is phase one?
Blue, that light blue.
Yeah. You can, the light blue up there. Well, yeah, that's the one on the right top. And, uh, that's for five years, twenty-two, three, four, well, four years, three years. Twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. We're already halfway through twenty-two. But the thing that we have here is a whole lot of repairs that they're, they're, they're suggesting we do in the comprehensive plan that we don't really know how much of that we're gonna be able to do after we do the grants. Because we still have an eight million dollar grant that's gonna do a lot of drainage in streets. So when they have it listed here in phase one, we may do phase four in, in our grant. So, I mean, I think this is accurate. We're just gonna have to modify it as we go along. But I think as far as what they suggest, they're, it's pretty detailed.
If you didn't take any grants into consideration at that point, this is...
No, this was done before we got the grants. But I think as far as the plan goes, what they put here, what needs to be done is pretty good, pretty good plan for phase ten years, but we're gonna have to change it a whole lot.
Yeah.
Based on the grants.
Well, not only based on the grants, you look, look at the cost. Okay, see the, that first, uh, phase, they, they have twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. And so they've divided it up into cost per year, so it's eight hundred and six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars per year to, to complete phase one for th- uh, for a three-year period. We don't have that kind of money.
Well, no, and phase, and when we're looking at the grant...
And this is only streets. This is not drainage.
Well, that's true, but, well, we have to do drainage, have to fix it in order to fix the streets. But, but the thing about it is that phase one or two or three, we can't go by that. Because our grant is gonna require a lot of these different streets in each phase be done early. That we'll be doing with, with the drainage. So I don't know how we can follow this exactly. We can modify it as we go along, which is what I think...
We won't be able to follow it exactly, but it is a roadmap.
It is, that's right.
Some logical layout of what needs to be done, and that's, that's good.
That's right. And I think that's right. That's what we'll have to do, but it won't, it won't be like, they're phase one, two, and three, and four. Once we go through the grant and have a lot of work done, we can change it at that point to fit what we need to do. But we still won't have the money that they're saying, you know, we need eight hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, that's, that's more than our entire budget.
Yeah.
And that's just for the new roadwork that we should be doing and not counting the maintenance that we have to do in the meantime.
So maybe we should roll this out as a twenty-year road map.
Well, I, I think it's a good roadmap. It's just the fact that once we start doing roadwork, it's gonna change a whole lot.
Yeah. How do you see this, C.D., as far as, um, content in a comprehensive plan when it really doesn't fit what we're able to do? Or, um, I know that we're gonna be jumping around. We're not gonna be doing it according to these phases necessarily. We're getting a lot of work done in the, at what they call, uh, phase four. That's the, back past Ivanhoe Dam, or not Ivanhoe Dam, Camelot Dam.
Camelot Dam, yeah.
We've already done some of that, and by the time we do Twenty-second Street with this eight million dollar grant, no. That's gonna be the CDBG grant, that's three hundred and fifty thousand. That should be d- doing Twenty-second Street. So we're gonna have a lot of that done within the next...
Yeah, that's what I say. Phase one, two, and three, and four is, is not gonna apply. I mean, it's all there, but it's gonna have to be changed.
Did you hear me, C.D.? Did you hear my question directed to you? I know. No, I was gonna, I was just gonna ask how you feel about this. What they're talking about is, uh, four different phases and, you know, this, by the end of ten years, addressing every street, you know, re, repaving the streets. And, uh, like I say, they have it in phases where here's the, the, here are the phases on the map, but, which is kind of unrealistic because of, you know, us having done work in very, various areas. The other thing is, uh, their cost per year, it starts out the first three years as eight hundred thousand dollars per year. Just the streets.
And we know that's unrealistic from our budget, uh, perspective. However, uh, going into this, the whole idea behind generating a comprehensive plan was that this is the roadmap, just as, as Councilman Morris noted. And it also provides us with some ammunition when we're going out for additional grants.
Right.
Showing this is what our intent or our plans are, uh, for the city. And, uh, hopefully it will be a broad stroke that catches enough grants. And remember, under the new IIJA funding, there's gonna be a considerable amount of money that's coming out. Uh, and a good portion of that is actually dedicated to rural areas. So, uh, it's not just gonna be the interstates that, that catch the major part of the funding on that.
Good. Okay. So you don't have any problem with it being in the comprehensive plan like this, even though it's totally unrealistic for us financially? Okay, good. That's a good point. Sorry for the interruption, Tommy.
No, no, that's fine. I mean, basically, that's it. You know, our roads are gonna have to be fixed. We can't do it by their phases because of our grants that are coming in and the works we've, we've already done. But like I say, it can be modified as we go along, which is what we'll have to do in order to, um, make sure that we're still getting the roads that are, are needing to be repaired can be repaired. And the grants that we need, if we can get more, uh, for those, we have a roadmap. And we just have to modify it as we go along. But as far as what they put together, I think they did an excellent job of talking about the culverts and talking about the roads and what we need to do. And like Seal Code, they say we should Seal Code our, all our asphalt roads once we get them done. Every five, five percent a year. Well, that, and, and according to them, that's about sixteen, uh, sixty-eight thousand dollars a year that we'd have spent on that. Well...
And that's, uh, we have this figure, it's two point three miles...
It maintains our roads. Yeah. So I think as far as the roadmap goes for, for the grant, uh, the comprehensive plan is fine.
Are there questions or comments about...
There's just, there's a lot of information here, and, and there's a lot of we will not be able to do anytime soon. But maybe over a ten-year period, we can get the vast majority of it done.
All right. Uh, you're, you're...
My recommendation is we accept their Grant Works, uh, Road Work program. It's been a comprehensive plan.
Is everyone in agreement? Any questions for Tommy, or...? Okay, let's move along. Everybody seems in agreement on accepting that section. Next section is thoroughfares.
I don't have thoroughfares.
Yeah, you do.
No, no. I don't have it, I don't have it here. I don't have my computer. I don't have anything on that.
Oh. It was, it was your homework?
Well...
Okay, well, okay, uh...
Unless it's in here that I haven't seen. I know they had stuff in here about thoroughfares somewhere, but it wasn't...
Okay, well, let's go on to the next one. Which is recreation and open spaces, and I believe that's you, David. And then look in there that my thoroughfares might have been included in that.
I don't have it in mine.
What was that section, Parks and...
So on the recreation and open space study, the general information and demographics in the first seven pages, uh, seem completely sensible. Um, you know, they, they track general information about the community, uh, as I mentioned, demographics. Past there, when we get into the goals and objectives, there's a, there's a challenge with what's been assembled by virtue of the fact that all of it is related to association property. They have, um, the lead organization on all goals and objectives being the city. And while some of these are, um, I believe, uh, nice goals to have and could serve well, I think having the bulk of these goals associated with the city plan on property and resources that are not controlled or operated or supported by the city doesn't make real good sense. Now, I think conversations about these goals and objectives moving into the future with the association are a great idea. And so that some of these targets might be, um, future talking points, uh, with the association. I think the bulk of these goals and objectives need to either be omitted from or simply referenced as discussion points with the association for the future.
Tend to agree. Um...
He's taking notes.
Hmm?
He's taking notes.
I know he is. Um, so is everybody in agreement with that? So basically, we either, uh, either eliminate it or the section on, uh, you know, what is it, uh?
Opens... Recreation and open spaces.
Yeah, I think, I think it would be easy enough to go through here and the goals and objectives that are within the scope of the city's, you know, uh, authority and responsibility. We can accept the, um, goals and objectives that are the association's authority and responsibility. I think that we could pretty easily ask Grant Works to relabel lead organization as the association. And instead of having them as a goal and, and objective, have them as discussion points for developing future strategies and push those down the line. I, I think that most of these, um, are good ideas, but they're plans and strategies that really belong to the association.
Right.
It'd be great if the, if the city can support them in those efforts down the line, but it's not really our place to put it in, in our plan, what they're gonna do with their facilities.
Right. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah, we can't do anything for the association.
I think it's a valid point, because we're talking about a soccer field, a hill that car, recreation facilities there. And that's, uh, that's not even the city that even own it.
Right.
So it's not a valid point.
Right.
Now, that being said, they've put together a nice little packet of detailing, um, um...
I'm in complete agreement with you, is having them reword that to make it, uh, discussion points between the city and, and homeowners.
Yeah, for collaborative strategy down the line. But this, this does a lot of, uh, uh, the follow-on, uh, where, where they've gone into each of the parks and, you know, detailed equipment and conditions and things like that. Might serve as, as a nice foundational document for the association to be able to add to and track and, and build strategy on top of that. So I don't think it's wasted effort that just needs to be pitched out. I think it just needs to be shifted in, in ownership and accountability.
Right. Okay, is everybody in agreement on that? Okay, let's, uh, you know, what we could do, thoroughfares, here's, here's a summary. There's some confusion about who is supposed to do what. I think that's where the confusion came with the drainage or whatever last time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, uh...
I appreciated that too, Tony.
Skip, thank you profusely, right?
But we don't have any thoroughfares per se.
Right. Thoroughfares, uh, add, add share R O W markings. Uh, okay, what is R O W, row markings?
That was my question.
Right of way?
Yeah, right of way.
Oh, you're so good. Uh, right-of-way markings and cautions, uh, signage to Ivanhoe Drive, Shandaklar Drive, and Lakewood Drive for Bike What Network. Ensure that all future upgrades to thoroughfares within the city limits are designed to I T E C S S standards with provisions for sidewalks and bike lanes or shoulders. You know, that would be nice, wouldn't it? Adopt a zoning ordinance with standards for thoroughfares, uh, thoroughfare fronting development.
Zoning ordinance with standards for thoroughfare fronting development.
Yeah, I, I think they're talking about your main, thoroughfare is your main streets. Possibly what they're talking about, and I don't know because I didn't read the whole chapter in there, is, um, like if you wanted to do any adjustments, like on Ivanhoe Drive...
We already have those.
Or building, building, you know, businesses.
Yeah, we already have all that.
Well, we don't have, we have, all we have is, everything is residential, but I, and I'm not sure if there's anything more in there. Uh, adopt master pedestrian bike plan, including sidewalk and trail network. And that's interesting because we're, we've just submitted a grant for something similar to that. Establish sidewalk and network goals, sidewalk network goals and prioritization criteria slash scoring. I think it's all practical. Install stopper yield signs that identify intersections as appropriate. And we've been doing some of that. We've been doing quite a bit of that. Uh, develop second, uh, entrance slash exit to Ivanhoe at either Mill Creek Drive or County Road twelve oh five, which is Tola Road, to alleviate pressure on Ivanhoe Drive. That's gonna be something that comes up for us. With that money that this last Harvey money allotted, uh, our, our commissioner, Joe Blackshire, is requesting doing, redoing Tola Road, including new bridge and everything with the money that's, uh, going to his precinct, to our precinct. If that happens, there's gonna be a lot of people that wanna open up Tola Road. We have been very content with only having one entrance and exit to Ivanhoe because of security. But that's something we're gonna have to look at in the future, especially if they repave that road and it's a, it's a good road. It'll be excellent either way bec- because, uh, right now, in the event of flooding, it floods faster than we do. So it's, it's no good during a, during a hurricane or a flood anyway as an exit. But if they improve it, then it will be an, an, you know, alternative, uh, to the one exit we have. But anyway, they're suggesting that we develop a second...
We'll have a couple of comments along that line. One is, uh, if they did that Tola Road, we have to do something on sixty-nine to make it a little bit safer to get in and out.
That's the huge problem.
Yeah.
Because it's so dangerous that, that, there's no way that we, you know, we could. But who would really wanna do that because it's such a dangerous intersection?
Yeah, I'm sure that...
That we'd have to have text out, do something.
Yeah.
Caution sign or a stop sign or something out there, or stoplight or something. Because, uh...
There's possibility they could do that. I, I think the other thing is, if we wanted to put in sidewalks, you know, the way our ditches are, we'd have to have covered ditches with culverts in them in order to make sidewalk. Because it's just about gonna be over where the ditch is. So that's an interesting development, but, you know, we're gonna be doing drainage in roads. If we were to put in sidewalks, that, that should be done at the same time. Because we're gonna have to put in, uh, this is my, my thought, we'd have to put in covered cul- culverts, not just open ditch, ditches. So, you know, that may happen someday. I don't know if we can afford to do that now, but it's an idea. I'd like to see some sidewalks on Charmaine South.
So you don't have to take your...
Right now, you kinda take your life in your own hands if you talk, walk, and you're riding the bicycle.
That's right.
Right, right.
So it'd be nice, but, you know, we're looking for...
It's more dangerous than going out Tola Road.
Oh, maybe, maybe, yes, maybe, yeah, that certainly would be dangerous.
Yeah.
Yeah. But anyway, I think, uh, thoroughfares, mm, it's a good, it's a good project.
And they have, you know, the different phases for, uh, thoroughfares. Okay, that's basically what they, that's how they summarize the thoroughfare section. Do you feel like it's gonna be necessary to get back together again to be able to go over this more thoroughly? Or, or do we feel like we can accept what they have as suggestions? Uh, again, it's suggestions, it's not something that's within our budget right now, but hey, it gives us ideas on possibilities of things we could do.
I make a motion that we accept it as it is with the notation that David made on the, uh, um...
We're talking about thoroughfares right now, but we all agreed on the, on the changes with the other.
So do we need a motion, or are we done?
No, I think, we're just kind of agreeing if we're okay with each section, and at the end, we accept the whole thing or not.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? Yeah, this is workshop, yeah.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
I like thoroughfares.
Yeah, it looks pretty decent. Okay. So, next. Oh, gee, I ran out of the juice here. Capital improvements. David, you're back on.
So this section weaves into a number of the other sections. Again, the first eight to ten pages are, uh...
Is your mic on? And it's not only for us, it's also for the...
Yeah, it's just not very close. Yeah, the first, first eight to ten pa- pages are, are again, uh, good data collection and, um, general information for us to record that we would want to be able to put forward for grant applications and that we would want on record. Looking at the capital expenditures that they have detailed, you know, we start out with, um, water projects, which, uh, I think that we, more or less in the previous workshop, identified as not something that we are planning to pursue at this stage of the city's development. Being that it's privately held, unless we're gonna look for a purchase option, those segments need to be excised from, uh, the table and the rest of the segment.
Which page are you on, David?
Um, so it begins on eleven dash twelve. It begins, uh, one, two, three, four phases of, of, uh, no, I'm sorry, that's a waste, uh, sorry. Three phases of, uh, water. That's eleven twelve. And then on the, uh, table eleven D, that begins on eleven fifteen with water projects at the top. And, uh, so those, those don't make any sense to have in the plan really at all at this stage of the game. Uh, the second tier of projects is wastewater projects. Um, obtain funding for a study to analyze alternatives and feasibility for the city of Ivanhoe to provide centralized wastewater service to residents. That, I believe, is, in my opinion, something that, at least to this level and scope, we should engage in, um, simply to understand where our, um, current way of doing things and where legislation are gonna wind up intersecting at some point in time and potentially forcing, um, these sorts of projects. So I'm in agreement with that. Drainage projects, although, um, you know, all of this is, is listed as, as capital, uh, capital improvements, that doesn't necessarily, C.D., if you could clarify for us, capital improvement doesn't differentiate between general funds and grant funding, correct?
Okay, capital improvements are usually defined as something that will belong to the city, whether we acquire it through general funds or grant.
Okay.
And it is, uh, what do you call it when you reduce the value over a period of time?
Depreciation.
That's it.
So, um, the drainage, drainage projects look pretty comprehensive and in line with projects that we either already have, uh, pending or in play. That makes really good sense to me to, to keep. The street projects, we've kind of accepted as, uh, part of the streets plan, uh, component with the understanding that it's a kind of a living document and a living strategy that'll need adjustment as we move along. Parks and Recreations, uh, of course, we just went over that. And, uh, again, rather than having these as targeted projects, uh, for capital expenditure, I believe that they should probably be removed from this section where appropriate. So that we're only placing projects in the capital, uh, expense strategy that we actually have the ability to, to launch. Sixteen seventeen. And that gets us through it. Now, again, um, most of these, uh, items in this section are simply a reiteration of the projects laid out in the other segments. So if we get, if we make amendments in other areas of the, of the, um, comprehensive plan, we'll need to make sure that they're reflected in the capital improvements program segment as well.
All right. Is everyone in agreement with, uh, what David is stating? Does it sound... I think what we can do is make note of the changes that you're suggesting and possibly go ahead and accept it with changes on the condition that we make these changes. Um, next is, uh, is everybody in agreement with that? Okay, next is funding sources. Will, you're on.
Well, there's different funding sources that they, they talked about. Uh, they talked about festivals, they talked about, um, fishing tournaments, different things on the lake that we could bring in for funding that would be different besides the, um, we know our tax revenue and tax base. I know a lot of different chamber of commerce gain a lot of revenue from different festivals, i.e. the rip, the boat races. Generates a lot of revenue there. That would be a source of funding for the city that we could look at. That would be different than, um, than the normal business. It'd be special events. Food trucks is another one that you could bring in.
On that, on that note, just since you struck on that one directly, last year, year before last, if I'm not mistaken, we passed an ordinance prohibiting mobile food vendors.
It's been, it's been in festival.
Yeah. And, and, you know, thinking about this with festivals, um, you know, again, reaching into my, my Wayback machine, growing up here, Fall Festival, Christmas, there was always something going on. In fact, even, you know, back when I was a toddler, the, you know, um, different clubs would have square dancing and all kinds of different things. But, you know, these, these annual events or these holiday events are a great way, not just to generate immediate revenue, but as we pull more and more folks out here and show them that we've actually got a community that provides, you know, a cohesive experience for neighbors and neighborhoods, that improves also the potential for bringing new people in. And as we have new construction and improvements and things like that, that increases tax revenue while pushing tax rate down. So all of those things are, in the long term, real healthy strategies, in my opinion.
So those are, those are all different things that we could look at. And generating funding for the city. And those, you know, that is pretty much in a nutshell what they talked about with the different type of events and funding.
If we have something on the lake, wouldn't that fall more fundraising for the association?
Instead of the city, the lake deserves, or both.
Both. You have to be, you know, you have to... You have to be, you know, you have to coordinate with the association, depending on what event it is. Because, okay. A large part of the revenue that comes out of these festivals comes out of beer sales. Huge. So, we have, you know, where we're able to sell beer in the city, so you get a temporary alcoholic beverage license. We get the revenue from the alcoholic beverage sales. And then you work with the association on the rental fees for the food trucks. Craft vendors, different things like that.
And that being said, like you mentioned earlier, we're going to have to look at our ordinance and the standpoint of alcohol within the city. You know, if we want to go this route, we may have to vamp that.
Because they are, they're a big money maker. And if you have big name entertainment, it really brings in.
Are you saying that we may need an amphitheater down at Hella Pad Park?
They just, they bring in.
Sounds like a plan.
They bring in, they bring in these temporary stages and
Yeah.
And do them up, and it's, it's almost as good as the other thing, but it's, they're huge. And depending on the time of the year, that would be a source that we could gain some extra revenue.
And fun. At the same time. Yeah, that.
We can even take it to the TV, Ivanhoe City Limits.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I like it.
Probably more university.
But it's.
There you go.
There could be a win-win for the association and for the city. It could take a lot of playing, a lot of work.
A lot of coordination.
A lot of coordination.
Hmm, that's interesting. That's, that's one, one of Holly's real strong points, is like, that type of event planning and coordinating and doing that sort of thing. Hadn't thought about festivals like that, but that's a great idea. See, we've gotten ideas. I like it.
There was one fellow approached me asking about Renaissance.
We did that at one time. Yep. Were you here for the Renaissance Festival one year? That's all they did, didn't they?
Something they did in two years, but they didn't have a lot of support.
Yeah. Yeah, you really have to keep that energy going. I know that Carrie Jackson was involved in that, and she just got kind of dismayed when, when there was not, there weren't people that showed, stepped up to help her. So, you say, okay.
Lights, the round table were missing.
Yeah. The round table's there, but no nights.
Yeah.
But I think all in all, I mean, does anybody else have any comments? We're finishing awfully quickly. Oh, I'm sorry. I forget the microphone. I'm talking to everybody else. I'm sitting back like, like we're not being broadcast. But I think we've gotten some really super ideas through this. I think we've, it gives us a sense of direction. And some, you know, like, original ideas. I really like some of the stuff that you've mentioned, Will. I hadn't read that section either. And I think it helped for each of us to take a section because none of us are going to sit down and study this whole document. That's what happened the last time. It was like a major undertaking to, to study an entire document. So, this is, I think, the way to do it, and we got to discuss it, and all of us got to look at it and see the, see the benefits. And, you know, I'm sure that all of our minds are coming up right now with ideas. Any other comments? Let's go around the table, and then we're going to finish a lot earlier, and we have a couple of meetings we have to stay for. David, would you like to?
I think the only, only thing that stands out in my mind from a two things. We spoke last workshop about extracting all of the goals and targets into a secondary document, having Grant Works do that for us. I think that that will serve us well to have a, an easy go-to document to be able to flip through and say, okay, what are we working on? Where are we at with these different things?
Well, we've got it in electronic form. I don't think that's something we ask. Well, I don't know. I guess we could ask them, but I.
It's all here, but these, those segments of goals and strategies, sometimes they come in halfway down the page, some in, sometimes they're at the front of the page. And really, I think if, if we get those pulled out and duplicated into a document that's just those,
Right.
it'll be easier for us to, you know, pull it out and go through. Secondly, on, on items like the, the street plan and strategy, if we know in particular that there are items in the plan that don't match our, our budget criteria, our financial profile at all, I am a little bit concerned that using the document as far as for, for grant applications and things like that might put us in a precarious position where we have a plan that doesn't match our, our bank account, so to speak. I don't know if we want to potentially look at. I know the, the way that the streets were phased might not be the way that we would phase them, you know, as, as far as, I think that what we've worked towards is primary thoroughfares, secondary, you know, area access, and then peripheral. That might be a way to make that a more usable section and pare down some of that large budgetary figures that don't necessarily match, match what we're capable of engaging in.
Well, and my thinking too is the way they had the phases, you're going to concentrate all your energy for three years in this section when over here, the road's totally falling apart. You have to address, I think, some streets in every area. Otherwise, you totally neglect a neighborhood, and you can't do that.
Yeah, and I think that the way that we've gone about it of, you know, more or less, the highest volume, you know, sections that the most people get, get to use, and running it in stages like that has worked well and makes good sense. If there's a way, I mean, they've got all, all the information, and this is what they do day in and day out. It might be an hour or two of time for them to reconfigure that map in that section to reflect something more along those lines. Might be worth asking. That way, it's already in our plan, and we don't have to fumble about with something that we don't necessarily think works well for us.
Yep.
I mean, if they've already gotten paid and they get paid for it one way or the other, you might as well have them do the work now while they're still on the clock, so to speak.
Yep.
That's all I got.
You're basically talking about what is a reasonable expectancy.
Mm-hmm. If we're going to put it in the plan and, and use it as a document to, to show, you know, state or federal agencies that we have a real good, you know, beat on where we're headed, coming out the gate with, you know, a $2 million a year, you know, budget outlook in, in the plan and, you know, $600,000 in revenue may not be, may not instill a lot of confidence in, in them to, to put money our way.
Yep.
It does identify what our needs are, though.
That's true.
And if we were to be applying for grants, if we watered down our actual needs, we might not be able to achieve the amount of money that we're really necessary to do the job properly.
That's an excellent, excellent point.
See, where I, where I look at it is, okay, here's someone else, third party, that looked at us and said, this is what you need, and this is what our budget is over here, per year, for infrastructure. We've got a couple hundred thousand dollars, and they're looking at, you know, a million dollars a year. We'll never be able to reach that. You know, that's why, that's the argument for, for additional funding through grants.
Gotcha.
Yeah, because we get real.
So, I say we leave the numbers as they are.
The only thing that, the only thing that.
That's a way to look at it. I think you're right, Skip.
Yeah. I agree. John, your comments?
Yeah, I'd like to go back to the housing. We, we learned quite a bit out of the housing department. I mean, like you say, did break it down real good. Take that information, go back to code enforcement. You know, it's, it's very interesting what they did. The other thing is, I made some notes on a couple of ordinances that the P and Z may want to look at in the standpoint of vendors and alcohol. If we're going to expand to make revenue, then we need to see if we can do it, and if we can, then, then it may be worthwhile. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I may be wrong, but I think on the alcohol portion, you know, the way we have our city is mostly residential. There's only a small section where you can have businesses, and that's probably where you could have the alcohol. But if you have a festival, then I guess we'd have to have a separate ordinance that would cover that so that you could use the, one of the parks or wherever we wanted to have the headquarters.
Right now, their alcohol is.
Yeah, because you can't have alcohol there.
Yeah.
So, it would have to be exclusionary.
Yeah, it would be an event.
Event special. I mean, it would only be for the event.
What did you call it, Will?
Festival.
No, but isn't there something, a temporary?
Temporary, temporary alcohol beverage license.
Yes.
It's a picnic license. So, you have, they have, and what it is, and how, is they have a beer garden. Beer can only be consumed in the beer garden.
Yeah.
Can't go outside, you can't bring it in, can't take it out.
Can the city pass that on us, or do we have to get it to TABC?
It'd have to be an ordinance, or?
You call it a, you call it a temporary.
Alcoholic beverage license.
Alcohol beverage license. Where do you get that? From the TABC or from us?
TABC.
Okay, so TABC would we?
TABC will authorize it.
So, that would be coming from TABC.
And, and.
But we would also have to acknowledge it and approve it also.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to make a pathway through ordinance, because right now, it's just a blanket blocking for all food and beverage vendors, right?
Which is what John said.
So, you made a note of that, John.
The P and Z to look at. I think on the roads and drainage and all those kind of things together, we, we do things citywide. Like, say, we don't do it by this section, this section, this section. But it would be, I think it'd be really nice if we knew, if we had the road plan, that this is what we're going to do this next year. Now, the problem we have right now is that we don't know, I don't think, what we're going to, what road we're going to be doing, actually, because we don't have it from the engineers yet. So, you know, we have to have a plan, but we have to have, we have our $8 million that we're going to spend on roads and drainage, but we don't know where, and there's a lot of those roads we've already done that are on that plan that we have to change. But as far as the roadmap that they gave us, phase one, two, three, and four, won't, don't work the way they are.
I think it's a, we should look at it as a living document that's going to be modified daily if we go along.
We have to modify it because it doesn't work the way it's set up right now. But I think it, it does show us what needs to be done and where it needs to be done.
Yes, sir.
And that's a good thing.
Just, just out of curiosity on that point, Grant Works clearly has some computer and graphics folks working on their maps and tables and charts and whatnot. Simultaneously, we have the folks over at LJA who have put some maps together for us, highlighting some different areas and whatnot. Why not put those two resources together and have LJA send them the, the forecast of, of what we've already talked about committing to with, with grant funding and actually have that be part of the document and, and let Grant Works go ahead and put that in, because.
CD, are you listening to what David is saying?
That would be.
I may be, I may be ignorant, but I would have thought that was already being done.
That's the way I would have done it, but.
Well, the grant people did this before we got the grant, so they don't know, they don't know about it all yet.
This was done before we awarded any grants, so.
But that, that way, what's in our plan, when we go to a grant application, you know, we can, you know, potentially make notes. And this, 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 and this, per the plan and the strategy, has already been executed. We're already chewing through these and checking them off the list. We've, you know, used grant funding or bond funding or whatever, and, you know, I think a lot of times with these grants, they like to help people who are helping themselves, and when they see people making progress, it's a, it's a sign of good stewardship of, of funding opportunities and responsible planning.
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. What, how much can we expect Grant Works to change or to, and that's where I'm not clear. And I don't think that, you know, LJA and Grant Works are going to be working together to.
I'm looking at this from, really, it's a graphics standpoint for the, for the most part. Now, the way that they've got their phases aligned, I, I don't, I don't know how, how difficult that is for them to jockey it around and whatnot. They probably use a lot of estimations, but at least being able to have a graphical representation that fits what's actually going on today, I think, would be.
Would be nice if we had an overlay to show what the, their plan is versus what we've done and with, with budget resources, grant resources, and the likes.
And even if it's supplemental, even if it's not changing the phased approach that they currently have, even if it's supplemental, as a.
That would be, I think, a question of us updating or, or including in our comprehensive map thing what we've done.
Sure.
Things that we've accomplished, so that, so that it can be part of the record. This is where we, you know, where we, the advances we've made so far.
I think that's a great, great way to go about it, too.
Yeah. Okay. Skip, you've got comments, I'm sure.
Actually, no.
Darn, come on. Will?
I just, I guess with this document is that once we get the objectives in the document, that we look at it maybe quarterly and see how we're doing, where we're going.
That's a great idea.
Because it gets lost in the shuffle.
Oh, yeah.
We don't ever come back to it, and then we don't say, well, we're going to, we're going to deal with squatters and junk houses. Well, three months from now, where are we with that loan objective, for example? So, I think that's something we might want to do, is come back to this periodically and see where.
Where, what, where, what advances we've made, and that's where that goals and objectives, you know, summary thing would be really handy to look and see where we, you know, where we've come.
Yeah, who does what by when.
Yeah.
Right.
When we start off and we, once we get it, well, this is what we're going to tackle first.
Right.
And we come back and say, well, where, how, how do we do with this? Where, where do we go with this, or what's going on?
Right.
That'd be my suggestion.
No, we're, we're at a very crucial time here. I think that we can address this simply because we've been addressing all the things that need to be done. It's not necessarily on the agenda, but we have, our eleven and a half million dollar grant is pretty clear about what's going to happen with that. Those, you know, the damn repairs. But the eight and a half million dollar, or the eight million dollar grant, I think we need to get together with the engineers, with our grant administrators, and go over what is going to be done exactly. Some of that stuff has already been done. And we have $2 million coming from this last pot of money, and we have to decide where, where and how we're going to spend that. So, and I think this is something that we have to do really quickly, especially because getting our project together for this $2 million. What Lonnie Hunt, the director of debt cog, explained was, our cog is the first cog that got their motive, method of distribution approved. And they have, GLO has told them that they're going to handle the cases, or the, the projects, or, everybody's going to get funded, but they're going to be addressed as they come in. So, since ours is first approved, then we can go ahead and, and submit our projects. And there's, it's like, first come, first served. So, it's important for us to decide where we want to direct that $2 million. But, you know, and I've thought of different things that, that I, I could see that would be beneficial. But I think that what we need to do is also have the engineers in the, the engineers especially in on this conversation so they can say, okay, I'm seeing. so they can say, okay, I'm seeing Lakewood Drive is really needing resurfacing. And that's, you know, a thoroughfare, if you will. Parts of Lakewood is on that $8 million grant. So, again, we don't want to duplicate efforts if something's going to be done through this other money. Now, this other money is going to, is allocated. It's not a competitive grant. It's like the $275,000 that we got from that first phase that we used in the back. It's just money that... So we don't have to go through that whole process like we did before of, you know, the competitive grant process.
And limitations on use?
Well, there are certain things. There's some limitations. It's pretty broad. Because one of the things I was thinking about in the beginning was, okay, maybe we could put a second lane on our dam over here. You know, I don't know how much that would cost. But then I saw that one of the, that it couldn't be used for dam expansion. And that seems like that would be dam expansion.
And is road resurfacing...
Might not, yeah.
Yeah.
That's one of the things I want to find out.
Yeah. Because we're not expanding the dam, we're just adding a road.
Right.
Yeah.
As long as, it just has to be an eligible project. Once it's, you know, as long as it's within the guidelines of G L O, or well, it's higher up, but they, as long as it's an approved project, or, yeah, an approved project, then, you know, we're good to go. But we have to look at that and get the guidance from probably our grant administrator on what is acceptable projects, and then the engineers on what, you know, basically, on costs and what's left to be done, yeah.
It sounds like getting our grant administrator in to give us some clear guidelines is the first step, meeting with them.
I think the engineers is the first step. I think we have to see what streets need to be done.
And what they plan on...
And we can always have the grant administrators on the phone, you know.
That'd be the best.
So... But what I'm wanting to do is really sit down, look at calendar, and see when we can get together. What maybe we could do is have a small committee looking at different projects that we could present to the council, but plan a workshop to determine what roadwork is going to be done with that.
So road resurfacing falls under eligible projects for the $2 million?
Yeah. Well, I think we need to meet with engineers first before we do anything else because we need to know what they plan on working on.
That's what I mean. That's why engineers is...
And then the $2 million would come after that.
Well, the $2 million, we need to get a project together.
Well, I know, but we need to have, we have to know what they're not doing.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. That's what I mean. We have to do this really quickly with the engineers so that we can determine where we can, you know, how we can put together a $2 million project to see what roadwork is going to need, well, we've got lots of roadwork that needs to be done. But see what, where we can spend the money and it's not duplicating.
I'd like to know when we're going to actually start, and maybe the engineers can tell us that because we have to go out for bids. It'd be nice if we could start like in February. So, I mean, I don't know. But we've got the money, we need, you know, we have plans from engineers, let's go.
So the $2 million could see active progress next construction season?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the $8 million could be, along with the dams. But, I mean, we could have several projects going at the same time. We could really make people unhappy.
Are you talking 2023?
Yeah.
You know, I don't think so. Well, 2023, we're probably, we're going to be seeing part of that $11 million thing going.
Well, some of the roadwork we could start, too. The drainage, I mean, they could start at the other end.
Guess what? It's not our call. It's G L O's call.
Well, I know, but, I mean, we've got two separate pots of money here. You've got the one for the drainage, and you've got one for the dams. Looks like we could start both of them in different spots, of course, but...
As long as there's not engineering review that it has to go through.
They're already doing all that stuff. That's what we're trying to get done.
Yeah.
So that we can start. That's what I'm saying. I don't know. We have to talk to the engineers or somebody, you know. When can we start?
Right.
That's the question.
Turn that thing off.
You don't need any more calls, so they go.
Yeah. C D, what are, you looked like you were about to say something.
What were you going to say, C D?
We actually had an open records request in regards to the timeframe because an individual was thinking that, why aren't we already having construction work going on? And they didn't understand that between environmental clearances that are required, that the engineers have already told us to take anywhere from six to 12 months. So there's a standoff for that. And then just our current environment, we have all these contractors that are already busy with available crews that they have and trying to add something in there. It's just going to be a delay. I will send to the council the information I sent on that information request so that you see the guideline that L J A had put together. For, this is going to be for the 11.4 million grant. I have not seen something yet on the 7.9 million grant. That's still kind of fresh and in the works. So, but along that line, we are expecting to get a drawdown request from the grant administrator, which will cover the costs that the engineers have incurred on that 7.9 million dollars pretty quick. G L O's already made it known that they want to see some kind of progress on a month-to-month basis.
Yeah, well, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Could we look at calendars to see when, some dates that I can put out to Dawn and Victoria to see when they could come and meet with us? I know it's a busy time of the year. A lot of people are taking vacations. I'm one of them. But I think that we, it is important to look at this.
When are you going on your crews?
The week of the 16th. I get back the 23rd.
So the earliest would be the last week of July?
Last week of July would work for me.
I don't have...
I don't know. C D, do you think that we should... I mean, you've been in these meetings with Lonnie Hunt, and I'm going to another debt cog meeting tomorrow. Do you feel like it needs to be sooner? Because that's a month off. I think that's waiting a long time. How about the 14th?
I'll be in my beach.
What?
What do you mean, taking a vacation like that and going to the beach?
Can't you come back for one day?
But you could be online, right? You could watch it on YouTube from wherever you are.
Yeah.
The thing is, if we put this off much longer, we really have to get on the stick here. It's not something we, you know, we need to let...
I'll fill in for you, John.
Does the 14th work for the rest of you?
It's fine with me.
Good for me. I'm in bed.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
The 14th of July? Okay.
Yeah.
Time?
What time?
What do you prefer? We've been, we've done these meetings at 4 o'clock. Do we want to do it at 5 or...
How about the engineers, Dawn and them?
We'll have, yeah, probably better earlier for them, at least somewhat. That way they're not having to drive home late. But 4 works fine.
Does 4 work for everybody?
Sure.
Okay, let's shoot for 4 o'clock, and I'll send an email to Dawn right away, Dawn and Victoria, and see what, if that works for them, and let you know. Okay?
This will be a workshop, right?
Hmm?
Workshop?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have another workshop.
Okay.
I mean, we're done. There's really no reason to... We can go ahead and adjourn, but we have another meeting at 5:55 into 6. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
So Kathy, I was doing some research on signal boosters for the street crew, and I understand that you were calling Verizon. Did you talk to them?
They sent SIM cards out. They sent...
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting emergency meeting to order. It's 5:55 PM on June 22nd. The purpose of the meeting, we do have a full quorum present and our first on the agenda, the only real agenda item is consider for discussion action implementing burn ban effective immediately in conjunction with Tyler County Emergency Management Advisory. We did get an advisory from our emergency management coordinator, Ken Jobe, this afternoon that they put a burn ban in effect throughout the county. Now, they can't make decisions within the county, within the city limits, but it's advisable, we feel it's advisable for us to go ahead and declare a burn ban within the city limits of Ivanhoe. So that's what we're doing right now. That's why we called this emergency meeting. Do I hear a motion to implement a burn ban within the city limits of Ivanhoe?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
My second.
Okay, is there, are there questions? Discussion?
Yes. What about use of, what about firecrackers for the fourth?
Well, right now with a burn ban in effect, we'll have to visit that before the fourth. But right now, hmm, that's the problem. As dry as it is, and we'll have to see where it goes. You know, it can be lifted, but I kind of feel that you, everybody knows how dry it is right now.
It's very dry.
It's dangerous.
I mean, I'm surprised they had a burn ban before now, but I think with the fourth coming up and firecrackers, that could be problematic.
What, what denotes a burn ban? Is it open flame? Is it, I mean, do fireworks actually fall under a burn ban?
Well, I think they, you know, I'm, yeah, they do, right? Now, the fireworks that Well, you know, one thing is having, going out and buying fireworks for your backyard in the midst of all the grass and the dry leaves and the whole nine yards. The other thing is, is-
Sponsored by-
Sponsored by the fire department itself in the middle of a dam in the middle of water.
And they have, they have a fire truck on stand.
And they have a fire truck right there.
Yeah, well, in 2011, we didn't have fireworks because of the burn ban, but it was dry everywhere.
It was burning everywhere.
Everywhere was burning, yeah.
Yeah. Do you want me to check with Roland to just verify that?
Me too.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, Will. Thank you for bringing that up.
Not that it means anything whatsoever.
Oh, don't start.
But forecast does show rain Monday through Friday of next week.
Thank God for that.
So-
It shows rain almost every day and move it to the next town.
I'm gonna hold your feet to the fire on that one.
I said the forecast said that. I'm not saying that. Like I said, it doesn't mean any-
Okay, can we, okay, Roland?
Yes.
Okay, we're in a meeting right now and we called this an emergency meeting to declare a burn ban in Ivanhoe. It was declared in the county earlier today by Ken Jobe.
Yeah.
And the question came up about fireworks. If a burn ban is effect, in effect, how does it affect the fireworks?
I don't know. I'll have to ask the judge or somebody.
What?
I'll have to ask the judge or somebody, because it is over the water.
Yeah. Well, in the, in the county burn ban, as Ken Jobe explained, only is for rural areas outside of the incorporated areas. So what we're doing is declaring a burn ban within the city of Ivanhoe.
Right.
Now, okay, so actually, we could-
Still have fireworks.
Still have the fireworks that, that you guys provide.
Right.
Right, it's our choice. Okay. Thank you for your advice.
Well, I mean, we're gonna have people there. We have trucks there, people's bunker suits on and everything.
Right. Well, that's what, that's what we were thinking about. The fire department is, is right there on the, on the scene with their trucks and everything. Okay.
Right, it's over the water.
Okay. Thanks, Roland.
Aye.
Appreciate it. Bye. Yep.
I, uh-
So we can, we can, we can do our burn ban the way we want to. Now, hopefully, we do have some rain. But I would think that we can, you know, approve the fireworks for the, the fire department fireworks.
Fire department.
And if things change, we can always call an emergency meeting again to lift it. But right now, I think-
What did it say about burn ban?
New Wethmore fires, many can be allowed during the burn ban without the express written approval of Fire Marshal or Fire Chief. All allowable fires during the burn ban shall be in a barrel contained with approved spark shield as covering. It really didn't say anything about fireworks at all.
But, but it has to approve of-
That's up to us.
Yeah, I-
So are we gonna ban fireworks except for the fire department?
I am inclined to anticipate that if people on the lake see a 30, 45 minute fireworks show on the dam-
They're gonna do theirs also.
They're gonna roll out and do theirs. 'Cause, 'cause, 'cause lots of folks don't read signs or papers or anything, so just-
Well, I'll tell you-
Time to anticipate.
Well, we can have our, our city marshals busy that night. No, I'm, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. No.
Maybe we shouldn't ban fireworks. Maybe we shouldn't ban fireworks.
So, so, well, so the, the county issued-
Are we making this complicated?
Well, the county issued a burn ban for the areas outside of the incorporated area. That's, that's-
Because they have no authority within the city limits to, to, to declare a burn ban. So what, what Ken Jobe did was send out to all of the mayors this afternoon, the fact that there is a countywide burn ban and letting us know that if, you know, the situation, and it was up to us, 'cause we have the authority within our city limits to declare our own. But it's been determined by the county that that's the thing to do right now. Now, we have a motion on the floor. We have a second. I would, you know, and this is my opinion, I don't have a vote. But I would think that we could always lift the burn ban if necess, you know, if, if we get rain. It looks like there's rain in the forecast. And we can always, we can, we can do this with the caveat that the fire department does have the authority to do the fireworks. And we can, we can always notify people if they do it anyway, you know. But it can be very dangerous. And we can, we can start fires before you know it. Anyway, any other further questions or discussion?
Turn that thing off.
CD, you look primed for a, a comment?
Yeah, Roland?
Okay, the motion on the floor is for just implementing the burn ban. It probably would behoove-
I've gotta, I've gotta hang up. It's in the middle of the meeting.
Amending that motion so that when the county removes this burn ban, that, that effectively will close out ours as well.
Mm-hmm.
That way, it doesn't mean another meeting to get rid of the burn ban.
To lift it. Okay, that's a good idea. That ours would be lifted at the same time as, as the county's. Can you, can you amend your motion?
I didn't make the motion.
Yeah, it was skipped.
Oh, it skipped. Would you care to amend your motion to include that?
No.
Okay. All right. Okay, we got a motion on the floor. All in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All righty. Do I, I hear a motion to adjourn?
I shall make that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
So do we have a burn ban or not?
No. We do not.
I didn't think we did.
Okay, are we ready, CD? First, number two on the agenda is consider for session action resolution 2022-7R accepting the city of Ivanhoe 2022-2032 comprehensive plan. Do I hear a motion to adopt this comprehensive plan, this resolution accepting comprehensive plan?
I'll make the motion that we adopted with the caveat that David made on the talking points for parks and lakes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
My second.
Do we, do we need to wait until the, the changes are made? Or is the notation of the caveat enough?
Just letting them know that we have some changes.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number three, consider for discussion action bicycle, pedestrian, golf cart roadway action plan grant through safe streets for all, for all program of the bipartisan infrastructure law. And I'm gonna let CD talk to us about that.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Okay, if you recall, back on June the 2nd, the council moved forward with approving for the city to pursue the TxDOT funding for alternative transportation routes. Well, just right after that, the second day after the council meeting, along comes information on this safe streets and roads for all, which is shortened down to SS4A grant program. Now, this is a five-year program and it comes through the bipartisan infrastructure law. But it has a short fuse on the, the deadline for applications, September the 15th at 5 o'clock. And so, as a result of that, we went ahead and published in the paper to get a grant administrator specifically for the SS4A program. Now, it's a two-part program over the five-year period. The city does not have what they would consider as an action plan. We are eligible for it, but we would have to have an action plan in place. There's grant fund for that. And once that action plan is in place, then you, the city can apply for the implementation grant funding. Again, this is over a five-year period. And so, the, the applications for, or requests for proposals from the grant administrators will be due tomorrow at 5 o'clock. And at this point, we have one response. That's from our current grant administrator. I sent a ping out to the six other grant administrators that I had previously notified, and two of those responded and said, yes, we got your email and it's under consideration. Won't know until 5 o'clock tomorrow if we have any others. But it's all documented that we have attempted and tried our best to get more than one application for review by the committee. So we'll see where things go on that. But this is, I'll just have to send this out to you electronically so that you can review it. It's four pages and I don't wanna go into all the different details on that. But the action plan grant example activities include planning structure through a committee, task force, implementation group, or similar body charged with oversight of the action plan development, safety analysis of the existing conditions and historical trends that provides a baseline level of crashes involving fatalities, serious injuries across the jurisdiction. What comes to mind is not only the entrance to Ivanhoe, but also what was discussed earlier. If, if toll road, County Road 1205 is utilized on an emergency basis, what can be done up there on the Hillster end of that roadway. Also, it's looking at alternative strategies for keeping folks from getting hurt, harmed by, and I'm talking about pedestrians or bicycles, which falls in line with the TxDOT grant that we're gonna be trying for when that opens up in this, sometime later this fall. So what I'm asking the council for, I guess at this point, is to authorize the, the city to move forward with the SS4A grant application for developing our action plan.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
My second.
Okay, any other questions? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next on the agenda is adjourn. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn at 6:10 PM. Thank you, council.
Is this one we just approved?
Yeah, comprehensive plan, yeah.